First of all, I'd like to say Merry Christmas and I hope everybody has a prosperous New Year that lies ahead. And we've got a lot to be grateful for, for sure. Randy, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Denzel Fodder.
Here.
John Brown.
Here.
Stanley Rigsby.
Here.
Anthony Locke.
Here.
Stanley Franklin.
Here. Okay. We have some guests with us that want to present something to the court tonight and if anybody, if nobody has an objection, let Mr. Fraser have his speech first and then we'll go Steve O'Connor with his speech. And go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Judge. So for those of you I haven't met, which is all of you except for Judge Franklin, my name is Scott Fraser and I'm the fundraiser and the gift officer for the East Kentucky chapter of the American Red Cross and that's 23 county chapter. As you may or may not already know, that one of the most important members of our staff, our paid staff is Joni Olden. I'm sure you all know, lives here. And I can tell you as the fundraiser for the chapter, we're lucky to have him and you guys already know you're lucky to have him. My job would be so much more difficult if I didn't have someone like Joni that I could do it. So, you know, I go around, I try to raise the money and he spends it on the clients that need it. I'm also having Donna Blair here with us, who's one of our board members. And every year at this time, for the last several years, Brenda Jones has come to this fiscal court and made a request of my path because it's close and inconvenient for her. And I just didn't ask that of her this year. I felt it was time for me to come to it myself. So, I've spent a lot of time in West Liberty, I've met the judge several times. And we have our monthly staff meetings now where our East Kentucky staff gathers here at the rescue squad office. And that's where we discuss the things that need to be taken care of across the chapter. So, we're here in a big way. We have a nice presence here in West Liberty, we want to maintain that, good relationship with the county. I also wanted to bring to your awareness, if you didn't already know, about a couple of things that we've done different in Morgan County this year that have benefited the community. Jody and his team of volunteers and me and my six-year-old boy, we came back in the summer of the day the commercial bank had their grand reopening. The Red Cross had a countywide canvassing and smoke alarm install that day. And our volunteer team, along with staff and some episodic-based volunteers, we went around the county and worked with five of the volunteer fire departments and installed 500 smoke alarms across the county on that particular day. You know, those smoke alarms, you know, our cost is $11 per alarm, so you can do the math. And we did that in addition to the everyday fires and flooding calls that we respond to. And so, in addition to that, another program that we have that we've brought to Morgan County, I guess Donna, this will be the second year that we've had the Pillow Case Project. It's a Disney-sponsored program where, we call it Pillow Case Project, and it's an emergency preparedness and awareness course. It takes about two hours and we teach it in elementary schools. I believe it's in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And so, we've taught that for the last couple of years in some, in some of the elementary schools around the county. And the lady who works with Donna, who was one of our volunteer leaders, I checked with her today to ask what we have done as far as the pillowcase in Morgan County this fiscal year, which started for us on July 1st. And so far, we've taught 121 students the importance of being prepared and what that course looks like. And I'll try to be as brief and explanatory as possible at the same time. We give each kid a pillowcase. It's branded with all the Disney characters on it, the kid's color, it's math, it's science, it's language art. They learn how quickly disasters can spread, whether it's a home fire or a flood, and the importance of being prepared when that happens. If there was ever a community in Eastern Kentucky that knows the importance of being prepared, it would be West Liberty. And so, we've been doing that program here, we continue to do that program here. Kids take the pillowcase home and we get items to put in the pillowcase that they would need. And it has a list of things on there that a child would need in the case of a disaster or fire in the middle of the night. They just grab their pillowcase and go, it's got what they need in it. We met for dinner earlier and Donna was telling me about a family that had a house fire during the school day here recently. And the child had came up to her and told her that they, he lost his pillowcase in the fire. Of course, luckily, he wasn't there, he didn't get hurt, he lost his pillowcase. So, I've got a reminder on my phone tomorrow, get that little boy the pillowcase. And it's, and it's stuff like that that we have to keep continually following up on. Our goal as a Red Cross is to make every community as resilient as possible to face a disaster. West Liberty has been very supportive of us in the past, we want to thank you for that past support. And if I could be so long as to ask the fiscal court to increase our gift this year, I would like to do that. So, if you guys would take that into consideration, feel free to ask me, Jody or Donna, any question you'd like me to do our best to answer that question.
Any questions from Mr. Fraser? We do appreciate your efforts, we certainly do. And we, we really appreciate Jody too. We may not tell that everywhere, but we do. And Donna?
I'll put Mary's gun.
But I think I go, I'm safe in saying that we will fix whatever we, might as be the last amount that we gave previously, but we will try to help in some way.
Everything adds up and it all helps. It should be known, surprise to anyone in this courtroom, that it's tough to fundraise in Eastern Kentucky right now. And I can say for our chapter, we, what we spend and provide to the population far outplays what we're getting in return financially. I'm the only gift officer in those 20 districts, so I can speak to just about every dollar that comes in.
Okay. We will certainly try to help you.
I appreciate it, Judge.
Well, Mr. Steve O'Connor, you want to present your program to us?
Well, I don't really have anything to present to you, Judge. We met, as you'll recall, probably about a month ago, somewhere that they were really talking about the issue with the library and the ongoing expenses. We presented an agreement to you. We ran the impression that that was going to be taken up by the fiscal court. And I understand that some members have a question about that or some questions. Mr. Griffiths and Allison are both here and I'm here to answer any questions that the fiscal court may have about that agreement.
Okay. Is there some questions, are there some questions somebody wants to ask you about it?
Steve, I wasn't here to hear the math that you all discussed this. How long is the agreement for?
Well, let me go back a little bit to the start of this. There was a master agreement back in 2002, or there about, Anthony, that spelled out that the library through the archives and department libraries at Frankfurt would pay money towards the extinguishment of the debt associated with that building. And to date, the library to the board in Frankfurt has paid about $2.7 million toward that. So, I understand that the money that the library pays each year is what pays the debt on the building. Part of that master agreement was that in exchange for that, the library would have the use of the first floor of that building forever. And that's the language that's in the agreement, it's in perpetuity, forever. And so, originally, the University of Kentucky, there was a tech center there, the University of Kentucky, paid all the expenses. And that lasted for three or four or five years, somewhere along there, then transferred to Morehead, and then MSU took over the payment of those bills. And then Morehead left around 2011, shortly before the tornado, and the county's been paying those expenses ever since. And so, there was never any agreement for the county, for the library to pay anything. And of course, once the chickens stopped laying, then everybody only got a little bit concerned about it. The county's gone, Morehead's gone, it's just us now, us and you on Gateway. And so, we looked at the budget that the library has and tried to figure out how much we could pay. And the library furnishes their own custodial account, they're, they're part of the building. And they take care of all the other telephone, things like that. And that building has one electric service and one water service, so all the utilities are all combined. And so, it's really kind of hard to know how much each person uses. The library felt like that there's about $900,000 that the library board in Frankfurt through the archives are going to continue to pay on that debt. So, at the end of the day, we'll have about 3.7 million in a building that you all own. And we just felt like this $30,000 a year was about all we could pay.
I think once we get the lawsuits taken care of, we should revisit that $30,000 and cut it in half. I mean, you take $30,000 from that, you're taking $30,000 from students, kids, people that use the library. And if we can pay that, we should.
Well, we appreciate that. The agreement is written so that the parties would have to agree to any kind of amendment to that. And so, obviously, I'm sure the library would agree to that if finances change. But we put language in there that lets you raise it according to the Consumer Price Index. So, if that goes up, inflation goes up, we'd have to adjust that and pay you more. We didn't put any language in there to decrease it. And we kind of struck that deal informally about a month ago. So, we added some language from the original agreement to make those payments the 1st of December. So, if the court is on board with that, then we, Allison and Mike, we get you a check, we start paying them right on.
Is Gateway going to be paying anything, Steve?
Well, they pay now. Lindsey has all those figures, but they're paying considerable amount also.
I'll make the motion, we'll go ahead and take it.
I'd like to, I'd like to interject here, just to be, there's a couple of things that I have a different, a different interpretation of the, the contract that was back in 2002. From what I see in this contract, it was three parties. It was a state library commission, it was a local library commission, it was the county. That's one party, more than 99% of the other deals that go on when building a library. Usually, it's just the state library board and a local library board. For some reason, they needed the county's help in securing financing. So, basically, we were a pass-through agent. And it's very, it states this very clearly in section two, where it says, although the county shall hold title to the facility constructed under this agreement, and Mr. O'Connor is right, we, once it's all through, we will hold title. We can, we can say that we own it. You have to pay close attention to the second part. It says, but, the county agrees that this facility shall be used exclusively for the purpose of providing public library services under the direction and management of the local library in perpetuity unless altered by written agreement by all parties designated herein. In section three, it goes on to say, the obligations of the library are to agree, part C, to staff and administer the facility once constructed and assure that it complies with the long-range plan of the library for public library service. That seems to me to say that even though we are pass-through and actually own it, we cannot use it at all for any purpose other than library purposes. If you go back to, it's, it's pre-section one, at top of the page, and I think that you have the same contract that I do. Whereas, the parties identified herein have agreed that the county will secure financing for this project and administer it as a project of the county, provided however, that the debt obligation will not constitute an indebtedness of the county within the meaning of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. The repayment of the debt obligation shall be payable solely from the revenues received by the county pursuant to this memorandum, and neither money is raised by taxation nor any other general or special revenues of the county shall be obligated or pledged for the payment of principal of or interest on the debt obligation. The next sentence is very important. The parties further agree that the library will make plans for and operate the facility as a public library service. If you take that with sections two and three, we can't use the building for anything. Just because it's been used that way for 13 years or 14 years or whatever the math is, that doesn't make it right. This says in section N that the facility shall be used exclusively for the purpose of providing public library services. Now, I'm only here to interpret the contract. I'm not here to say aside one way or the other. And if the fiscal court, they want to pay completely, they can. I'm just here to say the fiscal court, you have zero obligation, zero liability. They're wanting us to basically assume most of the maintenance and utilities regarding this building. When we assume that, forgetting nothing, then we have, we have to understand that we can't turn around and use the building. It, it says that in, in the agreement. I would, you know, if we change the agreement later, that's great and all, but right now, we're signing up for a whole lot of debt and we're not getting anything in return. We're not even, this is something I don't like to mention openly, but Gateway shouldn't have been there this whole time. This is, I, I don't know why that it's went as long as it should, but this contract speaks for itself. I'm, I'm not here to like downplay any of the plans and, and I'm sure this all can be redone, but right now, the contract stands as it is. We can't use the contract for, we can't use the facility for anything other than public library purposes and we are not obligated to pay anything.
Well, you may laugh at me for making this statement, but I figure that libraries are kind of like landlines in the telephone system. They're on their way down. And I'd say, probably, Mike, you know, the use of it across the country, they're getting less and less because of the computer nowadays. But, I feel like that we need to keep the library open for the county and for the people of the county, and that's our main goal is to do that. So, now, whatever it takes to do that, if you all can agree on an agreement, some kind of written agreement.
Well, and that's what we're here for. I think that we've come close to it. I, I talked to Mr. O'Connor today. My stance is, they use the bottom third of the building, they've got more than half the people that show up, are showing up for the library, I mean, that's pretty obvious. I, I had informed them that the court wanted, and this is from the court, it's, it's not my proposal, wanted at least in the third range of the utilities paid. I believe that you're all saying that, that you can't really come up any much more and what the, I believe that it's 2,500 now, which would be close to one-fifth to one-sixth of kind of the numbers in the end. As I said, I, there is no better way to spend money than on education and on the library. There is no better way. I'm just saying it in, in a way to negotiate, when you come to a negotiation, they're obligated to pay, we're not. They're wanting us to pay two-thirds of the utilities. If we agree to, that's great, I'll gladly pay more in taxes every year, that's great. But I just, I just want to inform the court, so you all have an informed decision when we go into this. And I believe Mr. O'Connor will agree with me on, on this aspect, if nothing else. Morgan County is not obligated to pay anything on utilities right now.
Well, let me disagree with you a little bit, Miles. First of all, the county's owned that property since 1992. There's been some discussion about whether or not you own it or not. You own it after the debt's paid, you've owned it since 1992. You own it subject to a debt, just like a mortgage, but the county owns the building. In your agreement, you have agreed that the county would allow the library to use that facility forever, based on them paying this $3.7 million that comes through the Department of Libraries and Archives.
And administer and operate the facility.
Well, administer and operate the library, not the facility.
It says the facility.
Hold on, wait a minute, I listened to you, I want you to listen to me.
It says the facility.
When you say that no one else can use that facility, since its inception, University of Kentucky's used it, Morehead has used it, it's not been purely a library on three floors, and you know that as well as I.
I want to say, I didn't say anything. I'm interpreting a contract that every attorney that's seen the same contract agrees with. I'm just interpreting a contract. If we want to change a contract, that's up to both parties. It says, I mean, this is a contract, I'm not trying to change it. It says, the county shall hold title to the facility constructed under this agreement, we both agree on that. But, the county agrees that this facility, not library, this facility shall be used exclusively for the purpose of providing public library services, under the direction and management of the local library.
Well, I heard that the first time you read it, but I think that agreement envisions the first floor, the part that the library uses. It never was intended to envision the second, third floor, because the library never used those floors. It was never set up for the library using. So, it may be a matter of interpretation, but I believe that the county can do whatever they want with the rest of that facility, as long as the library gets their first floor and is to use it.
I'm going by the contract, Steve. I, I mean, you can interpret any way you want it, it's plain on its face. This isn't something that is, is a little bit, has ambiguity involved in it. It says, and everybody, everybody can hear, the county shall hold title to the facility under this agreement, but the county agrees that this facility shall be used exclusively for the purpose of providing public library services. I don't see an interpretation there where we can use the facility as, for any other way, any other way. If, if you find me a way, I'd be glad to look at it. If the fiscal court votes to change it, I'd be glad to change it. I'm interpreting a contract. If this contract was different, I would be saying something different.
If you're not careful here, you run the risk of getting the hen off the nest. And if you lose your occupants of that building, you're stuck with the whole building to maintain with nothing coming in.
I disagree with that.
There is no way in the world that the library can use three floors of that building, there's no way. I mean, it'd be bigger than the library in Morehead. There's no way that the library can use, or was ever envisioned for them to use all three floors. And if the relationship with the other occupants of that building is jeopardized by your analysis of that contract, you may be...
So, I shouldn't, I shouldn't analyze the contract the way I think.
I think you're wrong about that. And you think I'm wrong, but the problem with this is, if you're not careful, you're going to be stuck with the whole building and no tenant.
Well, first of all, we would still get paid for the mortgage payments and we would still, we would still, it would still be administered by the public library.
You would not get paid.
We would not get that.
Well, it says the contract, it says in the contract that that's their obligation.
If the library, if any party that agreed it can get out in 30 days, if we, if the library gets out...
I disagree with it. We would, the county would not have taken the $3.4 million with the debt that the library could have got out in 30 days. We were a pass-through agent only, Steve. We were a pass-through agent only. 99% of libraries in this state are the local library board and the state library board working together. The county is never involved. The county never pays any dime on the utilities. The county never pays for maintenance. The county never pays for that. We did it as a favor because the local library board couldn't, couldn't do it themselves. And now, you want to stick us with most of the utilities because we did a favor on a building that we can't use.
Well, I resent that a little bit. We're not trying to stick you with anything. We've got almost $3 million skin in the game. We can pay 2,500 a month, that's all we can pay, that's all we can do. We're trying to meet you here and try to work with you. If you've been at the last meeting, we maybe could have talked about this.
Look, I've told you my position from the beginning, and it's been the same position that every attorney that's read this contract says. I'll be glad to write up any agreement that the county wishes to pay, but right now, we don't owe anything. And my position was, I don't decide. I don't say whether we spend zero or whether we spend $180,000. That's up to those members.
If the county wants to redo the electric and the water there, the library would be happy to pay their own utilities. We're, we're not trying to dodge that, we're not trying to stick you with anything. We're stuck with a building that has all the utilities combined. We've got, we'll send have almost $4 million tied up in it. We're trying to pay what we think is a reasonable amount towards these utilities. Now, that's all I can tell you about it.
Well, does, is this contract that we have before us far apart from you two fellows?
Pardon me?
Is this contract that we have before us here, this agreement with us and library, is it far apart from Miles, you and Mr. O'Connor?
I want to make it clear again, it's not me. If it was me...
You're at the fore right now.
If it was me, I'd give them, I'd give them twice what they asked for. I swear it is. It's between, it's between the local library and how much we want to pay, how much we want to pay. That is the, the only crux of the argument that I'm trying to say. We don't have to pay anything if we want to pay something. If we want to subsidize the library out of our tax base and subsidize their tax base, then we can. It's up, it's up to every one of you all, it's not up to me. I'm, I'm sitting here fighting for Morgan County, as I'm sure if, if he was still county attorney, he'd be fighting for you as well. I read a contract, I've been agreed with by everybody that's read the same contract. We can do whatever we want, but we're not forced to do anything. That's basically the end, what I'm going to say. I'm, I'm saying, they're saying they're going to pay about, probably between a fifth and a sixth of the utilities. If that's okay with you, we can...
That feel like it didn't, basically, Steve, comfortably, I mean...
Well, I don't, we, we don't know exactly what the utilities for the library would be, because there's no way to know exactly what that would be. The, the cost that was presented to us was the maintenance cost of the building, you know, the maintenance man's salary and all the upkeep of the building, it wasn't just the utilities.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, the building would be yours to maintain, whether we're in it or not. So, I, I would say we're paying probably, maybe 20 or 25% of the utilities, but there again, we've got almost $3.7 million in your building.
But I'm saying that $2,500 a month is about what you all think you can pay comfortably.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One more thing, a kid's saying that we were unaware that the library was, was on the hook for these, for these things. It plainly says that the parties further agreed that the local library will make plans for and operate the facility as a public library service. This was 13, 14 years ago, this is a surprise to nobody. I, I think that in the normal course of business, sometimes we, we look at something, we kind of pass over it real quick and we go on with what we think it kind of means. And it took a new county attorney to look over a contract that, that people hadn't really paid attention to for a long time. As I said, Mr. O'Connor's made a nice presentation here. If you want to make, if you want to make payments on the library, it's up to you.
Do we have any discussion among our members here, what, please?
There's a motion on the floor.
The main thing I want to do is keep the library open.
I think that's...
And I've made the motion to go ahead and, you know, take the $30,000. That's more than they've ever given before, as far as I know.
And we're going to continue to pay it.
And, and they're still going to pay their payments, $180,000 a year, you know.
What does Gateway pay?
It is, I don't, and I could be wrong, I'm thinking about 36. It's close, it's closer to the same. It's not far off. But theirs is a rent utility combination.
Tell what you think.
There's, you know, utilities.
I mean, I just made the motion, if anybody else is against it or whatever, speak up, tell what you think.
I'll say, we don't want to take anything from our students.
I mean, a lot of people use that library, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm taking it for the library, it's all I'm doing.
Well, we want to keep it open.
Right.
That's the plan. Want to give it a go. I don't want to take, I mean, you know. All right. Denzel made the motion, you're talking about this agreement that we've got here before.
Right.
Okay. That we accept this agreement? Stanley, you made the, you decided the motion?
Anthony did too, just right after, just right after Stanley, out of our...
All right. All in favor? Hold your sign. Okay.
Judge, we don't have any other matters. If we can be accused, I'll have Allison send you a check over tomorrow, or the next sort of bit of the end of the week for December.
I want to address your attire tonight, brother O'Connor, you look short in style.
Stanley, this is come as yours, it's the way I always go.
He said I could party that if it fit me.
I think you look short too.
Thank you all very much.
Come back and see it.
You don't incident about the other guy that's dressed up.
Hey, Mike, you look sharp too.
Thank you. Okay, the next matter that we've got on agenda is the Judicial Center, the contract. And do we have the information on the contract that, when it's up again for ripon or be redone?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was asking. I called Frankfurt and talked to Shelley Hampton, and I've got, switched around like four or five times, and, because this is a pretty complicated issue. As with most government, there's a lot of red strings kind of attached. I, what I thought before was a little bit wrong. I thought that the ALC was completely in charge of the new Judicial Center. I now know that it's kind of a partnership, okay? That back when, I guess everything kind of went down in the former administration, there wasn't somebody that could actually appoint a cleaning crew or a bid. So, it was done by the circuit court judge as administrator of the building, as, you know, the person in charge. When I was asking this pastime, they basically said that the county can bid it out, the county can sign the contract to somebody, but there's a bunch of exceptions, okay? Some of those are that, well, not exceptions, but you basically have to pass through some hurdles. One of the hurdles are, there has to be a minimum guidelines, okay? You have to do certain things to every building in a certain time. There's an approved list of people that the state has, but they said, you know what, it's just an approved list, it doesn't mean that somebody else couldn't actually get the job. They also said that not only are there... They also said that not only are there guidelines that they have to sign off on, they're also, they basically warned that a lot of companies will give you a low bid, and then a lot of extra stuff at the end, basically add-ons at the end. So they don't allow add-ons. So if there was any add-ons that come up about at the end of the year, we would be responsible for paying it. We would think we'd save a little bit of money, and then we wouldn't. Long story short, Morgan County can bid it out, subject to the terms of the contract that I have not been able to find, okay? I've asked the cleaning crew, I've asked you all, I've asked a bunch of different people, nobody can really find it. We can bid it out, as I said, but we, the people that we hire, they have to go through background checks, they have to do a certain amount of cleaning at a certain time, and it has to be a one-price deal. It can't be, you know, add-ons later. So subject to that, yeah, we can.
I believe the lady that does the cleaning now is in our audience tonight, aren't you? Do you have a contract in your purse?
Yeah, but I, you probably seen this morning, I was gone. So we've got one, but now, they said, Miss, I think, Mary, I think this report called about two, three weeks ago, or several weeks ago, and asked for a copy of it.
What I did, that was me, and what was sent over was not a signed contract, it was the guidelines of the job, basically. It was your bid presentation, your introduction letter, your letters where you're insured and all that. There was no actual signed contract that could be tracked down where the parties involved had signed anything.
Do you have a contract?
And so, I don't know if you constitute that as...
Okay, could you fax us a copy of that contract tomorrow, please?
Well, see, I've been doing this facility since, you know, it's been built. Cleaning all the floor and everything like that. Then you have to strip out floors, and you got clean carpet, and I just got through having the windows done. It cost me about $2,000 to have the windows done.
Well, I'd like to commend you, you do a good job picking it up, it's nice.
Well, I do, you know, but what we do...
Seems like it's a new deal.
Oh, yeah. Have y'all been in the building recently, any of you?
Yeah, I have.
Well, go and look at it.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm bonded, I'm insured, you know, I've got all kinds of insurance, I work for other justice centers, I've been busy 37 years. And, you know, I have my same crew, and back, you know, everybody's checked and everything. So we've got all kinds of insurance. I'm the same, whatever, you know, we have references.
I don't think we're questioning your work, but we're saying local people. We're not saying that you're not good at your work.
I did find a copy of what was originally put in the paper for the original bid, and it did state in that that it was for a year contract only. So you would need to, it would need to be redone, the contract renewed, or the bidding process would need to be redone, either way, because it was a yearly contract.
I've been in different, you know, situations, and they, you know, like they said, if this court can go ahead and rebid it, if they're satisfied with everything, they'll have to rebid it. You know, if everything's good, no complaints and everything, you know...
But the contract would still need to be renewed.
Okay, whatever, okay, on that, yeah.
Can you give us a copy of that contract?
Yes, we sure will.
Again, I commend you all, you're doing a good job, you're really doing a good job.
I sure do.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Third item, the EB Consulting, you got something to read us too, sir?
We had presented the bill last time, it was the quote that they had submitted, it just didn't get in the minutes, and we were just going to redo it instead of changing the minutes. But you all approved it on the last one, I don't know that, I've got a copy of it with me. Did you, no, that's in your folder, Nick, I see you've got a copy of it, if anybody wants to see it, in the other folder.
Is that the computer equipment?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Was it the minutes?
Connie said it was, I didn't go through and see.
I remember topic, but I don't remember EB, I just remember the purchase of it, I don't remember the quote.
That's what it was, the quote.
That was for computer equipment for Judge's office, right?
Yes.
We just confirmed that is presented in the work.
On the Judicial Center, are we going to bid that, or...
Which one?
The Judicial Center cleaning, the cleaning contract, is that going to...
Well, we will need to look at that contract first.
Yeah, we've got to make sure this is...
It might need some changes or something, we do, and I don't know when the starts when it stops, probably run some...
I'd say she's got no contract.
We can't find a signed copy of the contract, we don't have it, Judicial Center don't have it, ALC don't have that.
I think it'd be fair to rebid it, she may get it, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
And it did state that it was under a year.
Well, she seems to have all her things in her roll, I mean, what to do with, so it's open there.
If you bid it, all that'll be on the list that they have to do.
Should, should, or not accept it.
I'm all about rebidings, trust me. We just need to make sure, we messed up twice in that we've rebid elevator contracts, and then we ended up with two elevator companies for the same building for years, and so we don't want to waste money just by doing something we can't do. I agree they have the power to do it now, subject to the contract, let's just, let's give her a few days. Let's give everybody the benefit of the doubt, okay? If they can produce it in a few days, then definitely, let's move forward with the bid.
Just need to do the approval, EB Consulting.
Yeah, we need to approve that, we'd have to find it and approve it, whatever it was.
You approved it in a meeting previously, and I guess I didn't call it for a free computer, what?
The quote was...
Well, do I hear a motion that we...
The quote was presented.
John made it and Brandon seconded, all in favor?
Judge, let's table number four. I sent Connie some info, she said she'd make copies of it.
Everybody's got a copy of it, I brought it for them.
This is ten meetings, I hear this thing?
Yep.
Take that home, read it, let's table it, then go back.
Bring it back at another meeting?
We've gotten the bill to renew that, and it's due first of January.
Take it, read it, and send out email.
Yeah.
How much is the bill?
It was...
I think it's about $400.
$450.
$450.
Yeah.
The guy I talked to, Mr. Smith yesterday, and he was talking about some ad grants we did, that Nico's in charge of. We'll just read through that, and then we'll pay it and go on it, first of January meeting.
Fifth item is the name of the road, changed the road's name on, what was it, Crooked Branch?
Crooked Branch.
Crooked Beach?
Crooked Beach.
Yeah.
And they want to switch it to Eagle and Branch Road.
Eagle and Branch Road.
And they own all of the land on both sides, all the way up.
There'll be a way to fix it by then, is that correct?
I don't think so.
It's all right.
You got that number nine?
Anybody got any objections to that? All right, do I hear a motion that we do that?
I'll make that motion.
Anthony's made it, we hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Let's see, back to the Red Cross, talking about what we gave them the last time, should be giving the same amount that we gave them previously, or raises, or floor, or...
He'd ask for a little bit extra.
What did we budget for?
We don't budget for it, that's it. We haven't paid, from what I can find, Connie can find, we haven't paid them anything out since 2013, and it was $1,000.
They do a lot for the county.
They do, they do.
I'd make the motion, give them 1500.
All right, 1500. Anybody want to second that motion?
I second.
All right, if you made it, if you stand in, and you second, all in favor? Okay, the vendor claims the next portion of our fee.
Connie just put together some bills, trying to get everything paid out, what we can by the end of the year.
Is there anything, Jeff, you want to call our attention to?
Not that, not that she told me about, so, no. It's just routine bills, just trying to pay out as much as we can by the end of the year, makes it easier the first of the year.
Do I hear a motion that we pay these claims? Stanley made it, Anthony seconded, all in favor? Okay, the last item on our agenda is our holiday schedule, which I think is a total of 14 days in a year of 17. I don't think it's anything that's different from what everybody else does, may get a few more days. But, have you had a chance to look at it yet? Any discussion about it? And if not, do I hear a motion that we accept these holiday schedules?
About the same as always, ain't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I do, that's what normally is.
You should have added one.
Your birthday?
Birthday, oh.
I'll make a motion.
Brandon made the motion, we hear second?
Second.
Stanley seconded, all in favor? Well, that concludes, I guess, what we had to discuss, looks like. I hear a motion.
Go move it.
Yep, all right. Anthony made it, Stanley seconded, all in favor? I thank you for your attendance.
Merry Christmas, Morgan County.